Trustee Stoma, the recording has begun. Let me know when you're ready. You can start now.
Chair Stoma, I think you're muted, sir.
I just unmuted the chair. Okay, should I repeat? Oh, thank, thank everyone for coming and welcome to the Lone Star College System Policy Review Committee meeting. We'll start with the Pledge of Allegiance and trustee Kane, would you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance, flag, United States.
United States of America.
And to the Republic.
Republic.
For which it stands.
Stands.
One nation.
Nation.
Under God.
God.
Indivisible.
Invisible.
With liberty.
Liberty.
Justice.
Justice.
For all.
For all. Thank you, sir. And Mario, you may have to keep me honest. Do I hear a motion to certify the posting of notice for this meeting? Or is that?
I believe, sir, that Desiree is the officer that sort of makes that certification now.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The, uh, the meeting has been published in accordance with the law.
Thank you. Is there any public comment?
Yes, sir, there is one public comment. Trustee Sullivan will have five minutes to speak once Link moves him into the panelist position.
Okay, trustee Sullivan, go for it.
Thank you, everyone. I am so sorry for holding things up. The CEO of the firm where I work called me, of course, at seven minutes to two, and he and I haven't talked in about two months. So I needed to chat with him briefly. I'm so very, very sorry. It is now, according to my computer, 2:04.
Good, if I may just, ma'am. In the absence of the chair, the rules stipulate that the ranking member becomes the chair. So trustee Stoma assumed that responsibility.
I certainly can, I certainly can relinquish that responsibility back to the chair if she so wishes.
Thank you, I, I would appreciate that. Do you mind? And Mario, is there?
No.
Irregular about that?
No, ma'am. I just wanted to make sure we're at the public comment phase now of the agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you so much. Thank you very much. So Desiree, do we have anyone signed up for public comment?
Yes, ma'am, we do. We have one. Trustee Sullivan will speak once Link moves him to the panelist position for five minutes.
Great, thank you so much. Thank you, trustee Stoma, I appreciate your help.
No problem.
Oh, there may be a, there may be a technical difficulty. Give us one second.
Sure.
Hi, all, I'm so sorry. Link has lost control of the meeting. He's no longer the host. So if you'll just give us one second for him to get back on as the host, he'll be able to transfer trustee Sullivan to the panel. Trustee Sullivan, just bear with us for one more minute.
Hello, everyone. Apologize, I had your computer issue.
We've all had.
Be really fast. Give me one second to get the PowerPoint up and make sure that the recording is still. Yes, the recording is still going good. Get the PowerPoint up and then we can get to public comment and I will move trustee Sullivan in. I still need rendering, yeah. Sorry. Still having some problems. Can she take it? Trustee Sullivan, you should now be able to give a public comment.
Okay, thank you, Link. I heard two beeps in my click.
We can hear you.
Okay, great, thank you, Chair. Good, I requested to offer a public comment on item six B on today's agenda, which is styled, can PRC members propose their own policy proposals? Monitored at the previous PRC meeting. And during that meeting, trustee Stoma made a motion, but it failed to receive a second and therefore died. Later trustee Stoma, if I remember correctly, and I could be wrong, if a committee member could advance their own agenda item or something similar to that. In the event I misunderstood the comment, misinterpreted it, or that is, has nothing to do with today's agenda item. It did cause me to think about scenarios that concern me. So whether or not I heard it correctly, or whether or not it is what trustee Stoma said, I am commenting today and urging that the PRC never adopt a rule, provision, or other method that would allow a motion to advance without a second. Additionally, I strongly oppose any member of the PRC or any committee of Lone Star College Board of Trustees from both making a motion and seconding their own motion. In short, if a motion does not receive a second, it should die. That concludes my comment. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much. Appreciate that.
Chair, Ms. Chair. I, I have no recollection of the, of the, how should I say? The actions that's been attributed to me. So I would say there's probably a misunderstanding because I have not made any motions, I think, other than to get this meeting underway.
Thank you so much. Any further public comment?
No, ma'am.
Great, thank you so much. We will move now to the approval of the minutes of the June 10th meeting of the Policy Review Committee. Do I have a motion to approve? No motion to approve the minutes?
Madam Chair.
Yes?
I may be out of order, but there was one correction I would like to offer to the minutes.
Trustee Kane, thank you so much. We first need a motion and a second, and then we can have discussion of the minutes. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay. Second? I'll second. All right, so discussion about the minutes. Trustee Kane, you have a correction to offer?
I, I believe I do. At the last meeting, when I was talking about redline versions, my recollection was that I was asking that whether it's administrative or non-administrative, that redline versions come to us initially. And from reading the minutes, I got the impression that I was only talking about redline versions coming from non-administration.
Okay. Trustee Stoma, do you have any recollection? Help us on this?
To the best of my knowledge, and you both can correct me. Just trustee Kane, you brought, brought the subject up, I believe. And we had a discussion that around the context that this would change the rules we have adopted, I guess during our first meeting. And I can't remember all the details after that, but I think we, we made a motion with second and we voted to consider that this at the beginning of this meeting. So I mean, that's, that's the best of my recollection, recollection as to what happened in our last meeting. I don't, I don't have the details and I don't have it recorded. But I do believe there is a recording somewhere if we really need it.
Okay, so as I understand the issue at hand, we are trying to make sure that the minutes correctly reflect what happened in the previous meeting. I also, I agree with trustee Stoma that ultimately we decided to bring a discussion and vote on that issue to this meeting. But right now, we're trying to make sure that our minutes accurately reflect the conversation that we had. They are very detailed minutes. As I recall, and we discussed it briefly in the context of the proposal at hand, and we circled back to it. I also have the recollection that trustee Kane's suggestion was that we receive redline initially regardless of the source. Trustee Kane, is that a correct representation of at least what you believed or intended to suggest?
Yes, exactly.
Okay. And without all of us taking time to read eight pages of minutes, Mario, can we request that the minutes be further reviewed by the Office of General Counsel to ensure that it's reflected and bring them back at the next meeting for approval?
Yes, ma'am, of course.
We can do? Okay. So we're going to table approval of the minutes of the June 10th meeting to give the Office of General Counsel an opportunity to review the minutes again and adjust them as might be necessary to reflect what we believe our discussion was. Is there any objection to that course of action? Okay, great. Then we'll just table those minutes to the next meeting. Okay. That brings us to outstanding questions relating to the internal procedures governing the Policy Review Committee. The first question listed on the agenda is, should stage one of the non-administration policy proposal submission process be amended to require proponents to submit a redline version of the proposed change to an existing policy? Gentlemen, we don't have this listed as an action item. We have it listed as an item for discussion. But I believe that we could, one of you, one of us could make a motion. There could be a second, then we can have a discussion and we could vote on whether or how to amend our rules with regard to this question. Do either of you care to make a motion?
I'll move the non-administrative multi-proposals that come to us, come to us with a redline version.
Now, I just want to make sure what you're suggesting. You're suggesting non-admin proposals come initially with a redline version. Is that correct?
That is correct. And again, I may be out of order, but I would back to my previous conversation. Proposals, whether administrative come to us with a redline version.
Okay.
Madam, madam Chair, the, the motion is for discussion, is that correct?
Well, first, the motion is for a rule adoption or a rule change. If that motion is seconded, then there will be a discussion and then we'll vote on whether or not to adopt the proposed rule or rule amendment.
And trusted Kane has, has made that motion and I will second that. We're gonna have a discussion.
Right, thank you.
Yes.
Okay. And discussion?
Trustee Kane, do you have any other? Anything else you would like to say about this?
Just the fact that, and I know I'm repeating myself, but just the fact that redline versions make it crystal clear as to what the proponent is wanting to see in the way of change. So whether it's administrative or non-administrative, I believe that it would be who this committee could only receive redline versions, regardless of the source.
Okay. In that comment that you've just made, I think I heard something slightly different because I thought your motion was that non-admin proposals with a redline first. But what I'm hearing now is that you want to make sure that all proposals, whether administrative or not, come first with redline version. Let me ask Mario, he might be able to help us here. Mario, is it the practice of the Office of General Counsel that all policy proposals coming through the administration come to the committee first with a redline version?
Yes, ma'am, that is already the rule, which is why the question is styled as an amendment to essentially at your first, at your first meeting, the committee bifurcated the process into two different channels. And then the administration policies already require that first redline. And so it's non-administrative policies that don't require it as of right now. And so that's why it's styled as an amendment to that rule only. But ultimately, the effect in practice, the impact will be that if that motion carries, it will require both administrative and non-administrative policies to have redlines before they come before the committee.
Great, thank you very much. I just wanted to make sure we weren't confusing our motions and our intentions. Sounds like we're fine. Okay, gentlemen, is there any further discussion about this motion?
Just a, just a point of clarification. So I can understand if indeed there's a change to existing policy where the policy is written and you want to change the, I don't know, the wording or add a, you know, add something to it where you could redline the existing and insert the proposed. What are the case where you want to add, let's say, a complete section? I mean, this isn't, you know, within the possibility where let's say section I, I dot E dot one dot zero four, we want to insert an I dot E dot one dot zero seven at the end of that section. So there's nothing to redline. We just have to show the insertion, or the, I should say, the, the proponent would have to show the insertion where would be in a specific context of the policy. I mean, is that?
In that.
A redline?
In that circumstance, it still would come as a line, but all of it would be red and underlined, showing the whole thing is new.
Right.
Okay.
When I, when I talk about redline, I'm talking about not only strike-throughs, but new language.
Right. Right. Any further questions or discussion on this motion? Hearing none. All in favor adopting the motion that non-admin policy proposals come to the Policy Review Committee initially as redline, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries. All right, the second item. Can Policy Review Committee members propose, make their, propose their own policy proposals? Is there a motion on this question?
For discussion, so moved.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Gentlemen, discussion?
Who?
Go ahead.
No, I, who posed the question? It's my, it's my question. I think they should, they should start. Who posed the question?
I, sir.
Okay. Mario, Mario, would you like to comment then on your rationale behind this?
Sir, so the question, as we started putting together the policy submission process that basically is going to hopefully memorialize accurately all of the various procedural decisions that this committee has made, the question arose about what happens when a PRC member, for example, either of the three of you, any of the three of you has a policy proposal? What is the expectation? And the reason we're raising this now is because historically, it's in my experience, that it's much easier to have a procedural question that's isolated just to the procedure rather than wait until we have a substantive recommendation and then the procedure on the substantive gets muddied. So if it's totally up to the PRC, if the PRC wants to remain vague or not accountable for this, that's its prerogative, of course. If rules want to be laid down about, you know, recusals or substitutions by other trustees, that's another option. We really just need guidance about what, if anything, changes if the trustee is the proponent and that trustee happens to sit on the PRC itself.
Great.
Thank you.
Yes, thank, thank you for that clarification. Gentlemen, do either of you want to advocate for one way or another? Or elaborate on how?
Well, I'd be happy to start the discussion. I'm not sure I'm gonna, how should I say? Advocate one way or the other. The, the issue is, I see, you know, the, the top issue I see is equal treatment. All right? So, you know, we have other, other trustees who have proposed, who proposed policy changes. They don't get to participate in the, in the discussion. I mean, like the three of us do, right? So that would be a discrimination. If indeed we were to propose, which I'm not opposed to, propose policy changes, I, I would think, one, that whoever proposed it, which one of the three of us proposed it, have to recuse themselves from the discussion. Voting on it's another issue. If, if the recused trustee were to vote on it, on it, it creates a bias. And again, I go back to what's equal treatment. They bring a bias into the discussion. And therefore that increases the probability that this would go forward. So it's, it's a, it's a, it's a dilemma here. I sure think that we should be able to propose, you know, policy changes. Probably what I would do, if I're gonna do, is get another trustee to propose them. But that's what I see as the, the issues here, Mario, is it's a, it's a one of fairness. If indeed, you know, if we were to propose the policy change and we had to recuse ourselves from discussion and voting on it, I'm, I would lean towards recusing from voting, which means you got, you know, just two votes. What, what happens if you get a tie vote? So those are my thoughts. I mean, I'm not advocating one way or the other on this thing. But I'm, you know, I'm opening up the discussion here, so be free to comment.
Thank you, trustee Stoma, trustee. Jim?
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I, I don't think that we should, as members of a committee, I don't think that we should submit our own policy proposals. I think that there would be inherent bias in doing so. And I think we should avoid, I think we should avoid that totally.
Okay. And the other thing I want to add to this discussion is, number one, I appreciate Mario's comment about the value of making a rules decision on this at the outset, sort of in a vacuum. Neither, none of us are trying to propose anything. So the decision we make today on this doesn't affect anything the three of us have going on, rather than trying to deal with it in the context of one of us trying to make a change. Because then it really becomes suspect of inappropriate bias. So I, number one, I do think it's a good idea that we make a decision on this rule in this context, subject to later revision as future compositions of the committee may deem appropriate. With regard to members of the trustees who are not members of the committee, not being able to participate in the discussion, I would just remind you that while they cannot participate in the discussion at the first screening, our procedures that we already adopted do allow for an opportunity if a proposal makes it through the screening gate to be invited to a later meeting of the committee where they can participate. There can be some give and take. So let's not forget that that opportunity does exist. In thinking about this proposal, on the one hand, I think who better to know what's in the policy manual and understand the workings of how changes and additions come about, the members of the committee. But I also understand that that perhaps gives our recommendations greater weight than maybe they're due. So I can go either way with this gentleman. I'm not wedded to one way of doing things, but I do appreciate that the Office of General Counsel would appreciate some clarification from us. So the motion that we have on the table and thinking about it is not really clear, I don't think, the way it's worded. Can Policy Review Committee members, lobbyists, propose their own policy proposal? So a motion, you can't make a motion to discuss a question. You have to make a motion to take an action. And I'm not 100% clear on what action trustee Stoma's motion is proposing. Trustee Stoma, could you clarify that?
Clarify the motion. All I was moving forward was a discussion. Because I mean, it's a question, as you said.
But.
So.
Yeah, procedurally, I don't really think we can have a motion to discuss a question. I think we.
Okay. We discussed it, so.
Okay. Mario, could you help us out here? I feel like we're a little bit stuck.
Yes, ma'am. So what you're looking for is something like, I propose that trustees have the ability or the privilege of submitting their own policy proposals subject to a recusal, either at the discussion and the vote or, or and, I believe, is the closest way I would summarize what I understood to be trustee Stoma's summation. And I understand that trustee Kane's motion might look something like, I propose that under no circumstances a trustee be allowed to have the privilege or the right to submit policy. or the right to submit policy proposals because it would create an inherent conflict of interest. And so, either of those motions could be voted on once they are seconded.
So, Mario, sounds like we have a motion to have a discussion that's been seconded. I don't know 100% that that's a proper motion. Do we need to vote on that? Seems like we already did it.
Yes, ma'am. So, you already had the discussion, so that point is moot at this point. And I think that by discussing it, you voted in the affirmative. And so, I do think that that motion has been resolved. And so, the table is clear now for a new motion.
All right. So, now, do I have a motion addressing this question?
Madam Chair, I move that members of the committee cannot propose their own policy proposals.
Okay. That's very clear. Thank you, Trustee Kane. Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second that motion.
Excellent. Gentlemen, any further discussion? Okay. Hearing none. All in favor of Trustee Kane's motion, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
All opposed by saying nay. Motion carries unanimously. So, if we want, if members of the PRC want to make policy proposals, we need to find a trustee outside the committee willing to bring them forward. Okay. The third item for us to discuss, how would the Policy Review Committee like to handle non-admin policy proposal that's received after the seven-day pre-meeting receipt deadline but before the statutorily required time to post the agenda for the public? I'm going to ask for a little bit of clarification from General Counsel because it was my understanding that we had already said that late-arriving proposals would be deferred to the next meeting. Am I not correct in that recollection?
Yes, ma'am. With a small caveat, from listening to the record, the confusion arose with regard to but before the statutorily required time to post for the public. So, it's a very, it's essentially about a three-day window. And so, on the administrative side, I can tell you that the answer is no. If any administrator shows up before the seven-day pre-meeting receipt deadline that the PRC has set, but before we could post it, they're told no. But rather than make a decision, so it's spontane on our own accord, we decided to bring it to the PRC to get clarification. And it may be exactly what you just mentioned, a restatement of what's already an established rule, but we wanted there to be no ambiguity for the public so that the public understands that whatever we are doing is simply a steward for the PRC rather than making our own decisions depending on who the source is of the policy.
Thank you. Thank you. That makes perfect sense. Okay. I'm going to move that the Policy Review Committee establish a rule that policy proposals that are received after the seven-day pre-meeting receipt deadline are deferred to the, not the meeting that's next coming up, but the one after that. In other words, cutting off that little three-day window. Is there a second for that motion?
Don't move.
Thank you so much. Gentlemen, any questions or discussions? All right. All in favor signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Okay. Thank you, gentlemen. Fourth item, does the Policy Review Committee want to memorialize in writing its internal governing procedures similar to the procedures issued to govern board committees? Is there a motion? Okay. Tell you what, I'll make a motion. I think it's an excellent idea. I move that the Policy Review Committee memorialize in writing its governing procedures. Is there a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion or questions?
So, the question, the question I'm going to have is, how do you do this?
Okay. Yeah. And.
I mean, if I may.
Sure, go ahead.
You know, they're, just like we did at the beginning of our first meeting, we established a set of rules or procedures. And those are, are those published? Let me ask, are those published on our, I guess, on the committee's website?
Does the committee have a website, Mario?
So, we're in the process, yes, ma'am, sort of. We are in the process of getting a website for the committee. They're not published because essentially what we're asking here is for permission to publish your rules on a website. And so, the way that it would work, Trustee Stoma, is we would obviously draft something and then bring it to this committee. This committee would then have to approve it and then we would post it on the website.
But the life of the rules that would only last for the term of the committee, is that correct?
Correct, they do. But yes, sir, for the life of the committee itself, not necessarily the members who are the incumbents of the committee.
Right. So, just so I understand, so let's say, I don't know, two years from now, a new committee is formed and they can establish their own rules and those become published and what they conduct business by for that term.
That is correct. In my understanding, sir, yes.
All right. I got it. Thank you.
And thank you. You actually reminded me that I've done it again. I forgot to designate, or maybe you did it in the call to order and I was not on the call. Can someone confirm to me that the Office of General Counsel has been designated as the secretary for today's meeting?
I can so confirm based on that.
Great. Thank you very much. So, then it's my understanding that since we're going to keep doing that to you, Mario, several times Mario has reminded us that the rules of the committee are established by the committee. And if we find that a rule is not working for one way or another, we can revise those. And then the procedures, the written procedures published on the PRC's website would then be revised to reflect that. And I really appreciate Trustee Stoma's question about publication of the rules. I do think it's a good idea that the public and anybody with an interest in the work of the committee can see what the rules are. Otherwise, how can we expect them to follow them? Is there any further discussion about this motion? Okay. All in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Oh, I'm sorry, Trustee Kane, did you have a comment?
No, aye.
Oh, okay. All right, good. I didn't want to talk over anyone. Any opposed? Hearing none, motion carries unanimously. Thank you, gentlemen. Good work. The next item on the agenda is policy considerations. There are no policy considerations for approval to move forward or for approval to post for public notice and comment. I note that there are several policy items currently still in the public notice and comment period, which continues at least through tomorrow for several of them and through July 14th for several others. So, there are no completed comments for us to consider. Is that correct, Mario?
That is correct, Madam Chair.
And there are no proposals yet ready for us to approve or disapprove for referral to the full board. So, that brings us to future suggested agenda items. Gentlemen?
I have none at this time.
Okay. Trustee Kane?
None for me as well.
Okay, great. Thank you. Then, gentlemen, unless there are any other questions from anyone, I'm adjourning the meeting at 2:41 PM. Thank you so much for your time and attention.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You have a nice day.